We thank you for our health, our family, and our friends. Lord, we ask that you watch over us tonight and guide us as we take care of the business of this great city. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Fomo.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Do we have any comment cards? Seeing none, please remember to put your phones on vibrate, and we will move on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five, which will be published on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any remarks about our meeting on May the sixth? Seeing none, I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item three A.
Marcus Boudreaux with the Iberia Veterans Association to announce the Memorial Day Remembrance Event to be held in Bullany Plaza on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm here to announce. I'm Marcus Boudreaux, I'm Sergeant and Officer of Iberia Veterans Association. I'm here to announce our annual Memorial Day Remembrance on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. The Iberia event ban will start at five P. M. The ceremony will start at six, and it's just, it's just an opportunity to recognize the veterans that gave the ultimate sacrifice, and to remind the families that we will remember them. What the city has done for this memorial, it's been building it for years, and we finally have a memorial that the city can be proud of. And on behalf of...
With the veterans help.
On behalf of, on behalf of myself and Iberia Veterans Association, we can't thank you enough. But you have to understand, it's, it's not just support from y'all, it's from the sacrifices that were made, and just, if you can't make it out to remember it, just to remember the veteran, there's families, those veterans, that we have to remember. Please come out. If you can't make it, just take a moment on Memorial Day to remember. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Well said.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Definitely.
Thank you for your service.
Madam Clerk, three D.
Brad Calder with Calder Slave and Company to present the financial report for the fiscal year ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council. As Lanny just said, here to present the audit as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Last year I came up here and we had the lengthy discussion about eleven findings, and that was abnormal for the city of New Iberia, typically don't have that many. Happy to stand here today and say you guys have two findings, both of which are repeats from last year and have been resolved as I stand here today. So if y'all want to, we can go into it, but I don't think that's a good use of time because they've been corrected as I stand here today. So a lot of progress was, was made, and a lot of that goes to Babat doing a really good job, keeping the books, keeping things in line, and, and don't want to bash the previous guy, but I mean, it was an upgrade for the city of New Iberia, I think is a fair statement. Any questions about the findings? Okay. With that being said, let's get into the numbers. The numbers are also good. Let's move on to page seventy-nine, and we'll take a look at the sewer fund. Page seventy-nine. And then we have comparative numbers for both twenty-four and twenty-three. As we go through the presentation, I'm not necessarily going to hit every single line on every page, I'll try to cover the, the high spots, and you guys go ahead and stop me if you have a question or want to make a comment. But looking at page seventy-nine, the total operating revenues, up last year, they were five million seven sixteen to five million nine eighty, so about two hundred and sixty-five thousand round number year, uh, over year increase, uh, so that's a good thing. Looking at the operating expenditures in total, six point three eight million last year, down to six point one four million this year, so about two hundred and forty-five thousand less in expenditures, and you can see how much this affected that operating loss. It was a fairly large operating loss of six hundred and seventy-one thousand last year, and that loss decreased by over five hundred thousand dollars to a loss of one hundred and sixty-three. So you might say, wow, it's still lost. It is, but it's a substantial improvement year over year, almost to the point of it being an operating profit, which I haven't seen since I've been presenting, so a lot of progress there. Next section is the non-operating revenues or expenses, expenses being in parentheses. You can see the four items making up this section, but in total, net revenues last year of ninety-one thousand four hundred, and net revenues this year of seventy-six thousand four hundred. So a little bit of a dip there, mainly because we had less investment income, as you can see, because we had less cash in the utility fund than we did last year. The loss before contributions, eighty-seven thousand loss this year, five hundred and eighty thousand dollar loss last year, so again, as we saw with the operating line, the loss before contributions improved by quite a bit as well. You had a lot of capital contributions last year, over two million dollars, you had some CDBG money, about a million there, and some state capital outlay last year, not quite as much this year, but I know the mayor's always working to get as much for the city of New Iberia as he can, and did bring in three hundred and twenty-nine thousand for the year. So overall, pretty strong in the sewer fund here on page seventy-nine. Any questions on page seventy-nine? If there's not, I'd like to go to the exhibits. We have exhibits one and two. We'll start with one that pertain to the sewer fund. Exhibit one is a four-year history for the city of New Iberia per customer per month. So it's another way, it's a handout there. It's another way to look at what we just saw, but four years of history, and again, like I said, on a per customer per month basis. The top line is the approximate number of customers, and you can see kind of a decline, every year, a few less customers, not a huge amount, but, but less nevertheless. And then we, the next line is the income, and you can see a, basically a steady increase over the four years, twenty-three being at forty-one dollars per customer, and the current year fiscal twenty-four being a little over forty-three dollars per customer. And then you look at the operating expenditures, those were all the way back in twenty-one to thirty-eight dollars, jumped up to forty-two, last year up to forty-five eighty-two, and then we took a little bit of a step back, as we saw, to forty-four thirty-one. Operating losses all four years, but at a dollar eighteen, that's the smallest we've been since two thousand twenty-one. So we've seen a lot of improvement there, you can see we're hovering around that five or six dollar mark in twenty-two and twenty-three. Lot of depreciation in the sewer department. You have a lot of assets there, they get depreciated over time. We add that back here on this page to show you, what are you doing from a cash perspective? So operations, we're losing, but when you add back the depreciation, what are we doing from a cash perspective? You're generating almost sixteen dollars of cash, again, per customer per month, that's the highest on the page. Even when we had a better operating year back in twenty-one, we didn't generate as much cash because you didn't have as much depreciation. So as we saw within the audit report, reflected here from another angle, sewer department, sewer fund had a, had a strong year this year.
Right, question.
Sure.
So, so in, in operating fund for the sewer, we're not supposed to show a real big profit in operating fund, correct? Am I correct? It's not good?
I don't want to say not a real big profit, because, you know, you want to show, it's, it's a proprietary fund, so you're supposed to show a profit. I mean, ideally, they would be, it would be profitable. You don't want to show them outrageous...
When you're collecting money, you're not, that's right, okay.
You don't want to show an outrageous profit. I mean, you're charging citizens for a service, and in this type of fund, you're supposed to be profitable. So ideally, I'd like to see more than a dollar eighteen of operating profit and more cash, because you're reinvesting that cash in the system as reflected by the depreciation to constantly improve it and provide services to the citizens and the businesses.
And that's where it should be.
That's exactly where it should be.
Okay.
We're not a bank.
No, no, that's what I'm...
No, and the mayor always, I almost took his line, but I knew he was going to chime in at some point today and tell, remind us it's not a bank, and it's not.
No, a dollar eighteen is, is a livable number, it's, it's, you know, either way, on each side, the needle is good.
It's pretty good. Yes, sir, I agree. Exhibit two is a comparison for the city of New Iberia to three cities in Lafayette, varying in sizes. You can see we have city of New Iberia, the top, eleven thousand five hundred population, or customers on the system another way. And then you have Youngsville, quite a bit smaller, Lafayette, a lot larger, and Broussard more comparable to Youngsville. But you can see the income, you know, where you guys stand compared to other municipalities that are not really that far away. You coming in at forty-three, as we saw, Youngsville about thirty-five, Lafayette much higher at sixty-seven, and then Broussard at thirty. The operating expenditures, you can see at forty-four, within a few, with twenty cents of Broussard, very, very close. Y'all have similar expenditures, even though you have a lot more people on your system. Youngsville's quite a bit cheaper, and then Lafayette's a bit higher. Operating losses for Broussard in New Iberia, profits for Youngsville and Lafayette, and then we add back depreciation. Where do you guys stand from a cash perspective? Pretty comparable to Youngsville, even though they, they show an operating income, and you show the loss from a cash perspective, you're at about sixteen, we'll call them about seventeen, Lafayette quite a bit higher at twenty-four, and then Broussard at two. So it just gives you an idea of where you stand. It, it's nothing really to write home about here, it's just to see where you're standing compared to three other cities that are relatively close to city of New Iberia. Any questions on exhibit two? Let's move on to exhibit three, and exhibit three is taking this almost hundred-page report and summarizing it into one page. So rather than us having to flip through and look at probably eight to ten pages, we do it all here on one page. And on this page, we have your final adopted budget, next to that is your actual audited numbers for twenty-four, then the variance from the final budget, and then the four columns to the right, those three columns are your actual audited numbers for the three previous audits. And we'll go through this and make some comparisons and analogies as we go through. Starting at the top, you have the Advilorum taxes that were brought in, you budgeted four point six, you came in a little better than that at four point seven million, and that's higher than the two previous years, when it was about four point five million. Sales taxes, budgeted twenty-two point one million, came in at twenty-two point five million, so three hundred and seventy thousand more than you thought, and about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand more than last year. That's a three and a half percent increase in sales taxes from fiscal twenty-three to fiscal twenty-four. You might say, wow, three and a half percent, not that great. It's actually pretty good. I could tell you, we do a ton of governments. I would say flat is probably about average right now, okay? So anything that's into positive, you're above average. We have some that are down seven, eight, nine percent, and you guys over the past two years are up a little over ten percent. So that, that's excellent. That shows that, that business coming to the city of New Iberia, generating more sales tax base, generating more sales tax revenue. So I guess what I'm saying is those reinvestments into the community, they're working, and you can see it here in these numbers. So the three and a half is a, is a strong number. Franchise taxes, you guys probably know this, you budgeted three-five, came in at three point eight, two million higher than last year, okay? That's that CLICO money, a million seventy-five that the mayor was able to negotiate for the city, and we're going to see this money was spent in the expenditure side on the crime camera. So CLICO gave you guys that one point seven five million one-time money, not recurring. So I would expect franchise taxes next year to be closer to that two million dollar number, but he got the one point seven five, and you reinvested that back into the community in crime cameras, and we'll see that when we look at public safety, that expenditure's up because of the crime cameras. Licenses and permits, came in right where you expected it, you budgeted about a million and six, brought in a little bit more than that, a million and sixty-six, and you can see how comparable it was to last year at a million six thirty-two. Intergovernmental, nine point two million budgeted, eight point eight million brought in, last year was six point nine million. You spent about two point six million in American Rescue Plan or ARP money, and you had about two million dollars of state capital outlay that you spent during the year, so that's part of the reason for the increase from twenty-three to twenty-four at this line. Charging for services, this is the sewer revenues, we just took a look at those. Fines and forfeits, budgeted five thirty-one, brought in five eighty-three, and as you can see the previous three years, that's by far the highest of the, maybe the highest ever, Mayor. Have you ever brought in fine revenue of five eighty-three?
No, sir.
No, this is the highest ever. And then miscellaneous, kind of a catch-all, this, this can vary. You budgeted one point nine, you didn't quite do that, you brought in nine forty-three, last year was six fifty-seven. Couple of the larger items in the nine forty-three variance from twenty-three to twenty-four, you sold some vehicles this year, about a hundred and five thousand worth of vehicles, and you also had some insurance reimbursements on some vehicles that were wrecked, and you got some reimbursement from the insurance, about a hundred and fifty thousand. So about a quarter million of that nine forty is related to sale of vehicles or insurance proceeds on vehicles. And then we get to the total revenues. You budgeted a shade over forty-eight million dollars, you brought in forty-nine point three million dollars, a million and three more than you thought, and last year was forty-three point six, and I remember standing here last year and asking the mayor if that was the highest revenues in the history of the city, and it was, and here I stand again the next year at forty-nine point three, being the highest it's ever been again. So the mayor said in the exit conference, and I'm gonna say it, I don't know if he was okay with it, but he'd like to get it to fifty. It's gonna be tough because you had that one point seven five from CLICO.
You gotta have goals.
No, you gotta have goals. It, it's gonna be tough to do it. I'm not gonna count y'all out, you never know. But forty-nine point three is that, you look at where we were back in twenty-one, thirty-eight point one. I mean, the, the growth in the revenues is, is tremendous, and some of this is recurring revenue, so doing a good job on the revenue front, guys, excellent job. Look at the, moving on to the expenditures, general government administrative, budgeted six point four, didn't nearly spend that, spent four point nine, a bit more than last year when we spent four point four million. Public safety, I made some comments about this earlier, your budget is seventeen point five, you spent fifteen million, you can see last year you spent thirteen point three million, those crime cameras, one point one million is in this line item. So without those crime cameras of one point one million, we had about, we had about thirteen point nine million here, so much more comparable to where we were in two thousand twenty-three. Again, that's a one-time expenditure, you're not going to see that one again. Public works, budgeted four point eight, actually spent two point nine, very comparable to last year when we spent about two point seven. Garbage, budgeted four point two, came in four point one eight, a little bit less than last year, it was four point two. Culture and recreation, a change from last year, last year we didn't include the Pepperplex in this particular line item, this year we are. So when you're seeing that one point four seven million of expenditure, and say, wow, that's a lot higher than it was one point one last year, we're including Pepperplex. So when you move down, you can see Pepperplex is just some dashes. Pepperplex total expenditures last year was about four hundred thousand, and we're accounting for it here. So when you look at it all combined, culture and rec spending is actually down year over year from fiscal twenty-three to fiscal twenty-four. Sewer utility fund expenditures, we went over those, you can see it broken out between the depreciation and the operation expenditures. Pepperplex, as I just pointed out, you see the dashes, that was moved into a governmental fund, so we were accounting for that in culture and recreation, so you're not going to see it as a separate line item anymore. Debt service, principal retirement, budgeted two point seven seven five, right on the money is what you spent, and that's a bit higher than last year when it was two point one million. Interest and fiscal charges, budgeted one point two million, spent one point three million, quite a bit higher than last year, it was seven seventy-five. Remember, you had that debt issuance, like, with sixteen million dollars, okay, the two thousand twenty-four issue, so you had one interest payment on that of about a quarter million, plus you had the debt issuance cost of about three hundred and fifty thousand. That's the reason for the variance of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand up to the one point three million and change this year, it's all because of that new issue. Then we get to the capital outlay, you budgeted seven point five, you spent about eight point five, about a million more than you thought, but quite a bit less than last year at fourteen point one million. So you expected to spend fifty-seven point nine million, you, you spent quite a bit less than that at forty-nine point two. You're always very conservative on the expenditures, I mean, you budget way more than you're really going to spend. And you can see how they compare to last year at fifty-one million, but you had so much more capital last year. The excess of deficiency, you expected to have a deficiency of revenues over expenditures of nine point nine million, came in with a surplus of a hundred and fifteen thousand. That's excellent, guys, that's excellent, considering you spent eight point five million on capital, to have a surplus of a hundred and fifteen thousand is excellent, you haven't had a surplus since back in twenty-one, when the surplus was three point one million, and you only spent two point nine million on capital back in twenty-one. The rest of the page, i- if y'all want to take a look at it, you can, it's the other financing sources of seventeen million, that's the sixteen million you issue in debt, we have to show it like it's a revenue of government, I don't like it because it's misleading. So for my purposes, I prefer to stop here and say the excess is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, that's basically what it is. Any questions on exhibit three? If there's not, let's go back to the, to the audit report, and let's look at page sixty-six, which is your statement.
Brad.
Yes, sir.
Where did, where did the ARPA, I know the ARPA money came in a couple of years back, but now we spending it out, is it still flowing within our budget now currently?
It is, so you spent two point six million, that's in intergovernmental, so in the intergovernmental revenues, that's where you have that, and then we're, we can see here on page sixty-six what you have left, that you have not spent as of October thirty-first. If you go to page sixty-six, sixty-six, we'll see it.
I jumped ahead a little bit, sorry about that.
But you beat me to it. Just, I'll just tell you, the number's about six million. You have, you have six million unspent as of October thirty-first, twenty-four.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Now, that's all been obligated.
Right, so it doesn't reflect our total revenue?
No, you've earmarked to spend it, we have to show it as a liability until you actually spend it. So we showed, y'all spent two point six, we showed that as a revenue and an expenditure in fiscal twenty-four, and as you guys spend the remainder down, we'll account for it the same way.
I think by twenty-seven, we gotta have it, no?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah.
But you just have to have it earmarked by December thirty-first of last year.
Which we do, and we hitting it home.
The pressure's on.
We hitting it.
Freddy will get that money spent.
Oh, he's gonna be, he's gonna be hoping we'll get it.
Okay, on page sixty-six, I'm going to concentrate on the four, two columns to the right, that's your total numbers for fiscal twenty-four compared to fiscal twenty-three. I'm not going to hit every line item, guys, there's a lot of information here, and some of it's not necessarily worth our time this evening. But the first three lines on this page are worth our time. You can see cash last year was all comprised of one line item, it was forty-four million dollars. This year is broken out between three line items, cash and interest-bearing deposits, twenty-six point four nine million dollars. Then you have cash with paying agent, this is related to the debt payment, you guys have a debt payment due on November first, you made the debt payment before that, it cleared the bank, so we had to show it as cash with paying agent. Y'all didn't have custody of it, you had cleared the bank, that's where you had the six thirty-one shown this year, you didn't have it last year. And then you have investments of thirty million dollars, okay? A good portion of this thirty million is the sixteen million that you issued in debt during fiscal year twenty-four. And so when you combine all three of those, it's about fifty-seven point two million in total cash and investments compared to forty-four million last year, so about thirteen million higher, makes sense when you issue sixteen million dollars of debt toward the middle of your fiscal year. Moving on from there, there's no other items that jump out to me as, as really worth making any comments on, so in total, I'll just say the assets of the city of New Iberia increased from a hundred and fifty-four million last year to a hundred and seventy-two million in the current year, mainly because of the debt issuance, as we just talked about, eighteen million dollar increase year over year. Deferred outflows are not worth, we're talking about. Liabilities, there's a lot listed out here, I'd really like to look at the last four, that's the most relevant to me. The net pension liability, remember, this is a state pension, you have no control over it, but we must show it on your financial statements. It was twenty-two point eight million last year, it's nineteen million dollars this year, you didn't do anything to save the money, you didn't pay on it, this is just actuarially computed, and we have to show it this way. So the liabilities look like they went down three point eight million, it could go up three point eight million dollars next year, who knows? The other post-employment benefit, eight point nine million last year, nine point three million in the current year, this is the benefits you're going to pay employees that have retired from your city. And then right above that are two big items, is the long-term liabilities, this is basically the bonded debt of the city of New Iberia. Last year, the total for the long-term, excuse me, the portion due within one year and more than one year was a three point five million plus a thirty-one point seven, so about thirty-five million in bonded debt last year. This year, it's the forty-six point one million plus the two point seven, so about forty-nine million in bonded debt. You issued about sixteen million, you paid down about two, increase of about fourteen year over year, makes sense. So total liabilities for the city of New Iberia, seventy-nine point nine million in fiscal twenty-three compared to eighty-six point three million in fiscal twenty-four. Deferred inflows are not worth talking about. Net position, you have net investment in capital assets, sixty-nine point six million last year, up to seventy-seven point five, so a lot of reinvestment into the city, as we discussed earlier. Then you have your restricted positions, you have capital projects, eight million to about seven million in the current year, your debt service, right about two point three last year to two point six year. Sales tax dedications, fifteen point five, fourteen point nine million, that number's going to come up in our next exhibit on exhibit four, that's fourteen point nine million in sales tax. Other is minimal, and then unrestricted deficit in this case of fifteen point seven million last year, down to thirteen point eight deficit in the current year, this number's going to come in, come up in our next exhibit on exhibit four. Any questions on page sixty-six? If there's not, I made a couple of references, let's go to exhibit four. Exhibit four has a lot of math on it, three-year history, and what we're trying to do here is say, when you factor in various items, how many days of operations does the city of New Iberia really have? Everything I just went over, how many days could you operate this city, assuming no, no revenues coming in? That's what we're trying to do here on exhibit four. So you can see in number one on, on exhibit four, we start with that unrestricted net position we just saw from page sixty-six, the deficit of thirteen point eight million. We add back the net pension liability, the OPEB obligation, and the sales tax dedications to get to what we believe is an available net position for the city of New Iberia. That number comes out to twenty-eight point one million in two thousand twenty-four compared to about twenty-six point nine last year, and twenty-seven point seven, all the way back in twenty-two. In number two on the exhibit, we take your annual expenditures, that's from exhibit three, we back off the capital, say, how much are you spending on operations, just purely operations, that's why we back out capital, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So that average daily expenditure, the city of New Iberia is spending a hundred and eleven thousand dollars on operations every day of the year, seven days a week, compared to a hundred and one thousand in fiscal twenty-three and ninety-six thousand in fiscal twenty-two. So you say, man, that's a lot of money per day, and it is, how many days does that leave us with? We're going to divide that a hundred and eleven thousand into the twenty-eight million, leaves you the very last line item, two hundred and fifty-two days, compared to last year, two hundred and sixty-seven, year before that, two eighty-eight. The benchmark is to have sixty days, you guys are well above that. So you're continuing to reinvest, but you're also bringing in more revenue, you're doing a prudent job managing the money, so you have two hundred and fifty-two days. So that, that's a good thing. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to stand up here and say you guys have sixty-one days, that's not ideal, you'd be cash strapped, it would be difficult to manage things, difficult to grow. At two fifty-two, that's a strong, healthy number, but not so strong where you're hoarding cash and not reinvesting into the community. Any questions on exhibit four? Okay. Now, on exhibit five and six, we'll go in that order, it, it's just some more comparisons to the same three cities we saw within the sewer fund. And what we're doing on exhibit five, and I, I kind of pick at the mayor every year about it, is just saying how advantageous it is to do business within the city of New Iberia compared to some of the other cities, including Lafayette, where I live, because it doesn't cost as much to do business here. You have, we, we have the populations of the different cities here at the top, twenty-seven thousand for New Iberia, a hundred and twenty for Lafayette, eighteen thousand for Youngsville, fourteen for Broussard. Sales tax percentage, two point five, second lowest on the page, only Lafayette's lower from a percentage standpoint, Lafayette, excuse me, Youngsville and Broussard both at three point five. You do have property taxes here, the same way you do in Lafayette and Youngsville, no property tax in Broussard. So the average revenue, when you factor in sales and property tax, is about a thousand dollars, a thousand and six to be exact for the city of New Iberia, a thousand and eighty in Lafayette, one thousand one hundred and thirty-three in Youngsville, and one thousand four sixty-nine in Broussard. So you've got two sides of the coin, I mean, in some ways you'd want to be the highest and say we're generating the most revenue, on the other side, you could say it, the cost of doing business here is a bit cheaper than it is in some of your competitive cities. Not much else to say about exhibit five, guys. Exhibit six is a similar comparison, except here, we're looking at police expenditures and boiling that down to a police expenditure per person. You can see we have the police expenditures across the top, New Iberia coming in at nine point three million, Lafayette forty-four million, Broussard and Youngsville right at about four point eight million apiece. Then we back out the fines, revenue being generated by the department to help fund the department, and then you have your net police expenditures there, the population, and then the bottom, bottom line, what is the net police expenditure per person? At 323, less than Lafayette at 358, higher than Broussard at 299, and a lot higher than Youngsville at 208. Where should this number be? As I was preparing for the presentation, I truly have no idea. I really don't know if you say, you know, where should this number be? I'm not sure. I think that's part of the reason we give you the comparison, you're less than Lafayette but more than Broussard. I guess that makes sense to me. I don't know if you have a different opinion.
Too many variable factors in that.
That's what I'm saying. So it's difficult for me to stand here as an auditor and say, well, you should be at 379 instead of 320. You know, it's a comparison, so take it for what you will. That's essentially my presentation. The exhibits, the six we went over, the couple of pages in the audit report, but happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Overall, in my opinion, strong report, much improved over last year, happy to present a report with the improvements that we saw. Fiscally strong, a big improvement in the findings, really strong report. Any questions about anything that I covered or did not cover? Questions, comments? Everybody good?
Good.
If there's none, I just would like to thank the city of New Iberia for the opportunity to provide the audit services for the city and look forward to hopefully providing those for many years to come. Thank you all very much.
Brad, you said.
Mayor Council, at the Babette, in the back of, just one quick note, work with Babette this year, very nice, very on top of things, very accurate, real pleasure to work with her and her staff this year, and just want to say that y'all guys did a good job bringing Babette in, and she's doing an excellent job. Let me just say that.
In the past, you said the opinion part of the audit was, was.
Opinion's the best we can give, yeah, both on the single audit.
When we read it and go over it, is the best part to give a whole synopsis of the.
Yes, sir. Clean audit, I should have said that at the beginning, good point. Clean audit on the financial statements, clean audit on the clear opinion on the single audit as well, best that we can give.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Pleasure to work with you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, everybody good? Madam clerk, four A.
Ordinance number 202511, an ordinance amending and reenacting section 86-130 of the city of New Iberia code of ordinances prohibiting operation of vehicles in standing water, establishing penalties, and providing for enforcement through electronic surveillance.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
Councilman Dan Dahl, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, anyone from the public to speak on this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Second. Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and Councilman David Merrill, is there any discussion on this item? And just to remind everybody, this is a new ordinance, this is going along with policies we were putting in place after the recent floods. This is an item we had been talked about for probably two years, and I think we finally where we can do something with it, but this is, when you cut your grass, are your yard service cuts the grass for you and they throw it all in the street? That's going to get in our drains, we now have a fine associated.
The standing water, not grass.
Oh, wait, wrong one. Oh, man, I'm jumping ahead.
I thought I read something wrong.
I apologize, I'm jumping ahead. I should be looking. Yeah, this is our standing water, that it's a thousand-dollar fine if you create a wake condition in a flood event. So the other one's coming. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Councilman David Merrill.
Matter of fact, that was brought to my attention.
Yes, sir.
About, you know, big vehicles, big trucks coming, and they don't slow down, and they just throwing water all over people's vehicles and everything like that, that's real dangerous, especially when you've got a lot of water and floods and stuff like that. And I really think that that's going to pay attention, make a lot of them pay attention to what's going on out there, especially with the fine part of it. Because you shouldn't be driving that fast when you've got streets full of water like that, and people in smaller vehicles that's smaller than yours, they're stopping in there and they can't go through the water and everything like that. So I think this is a good thing, and we need it.
Anybody else? And I'd rather not find anybody, we just need people to get the message. I'm hoping that we make a poster child out of somebody and everybody else kind of gets the drift and just doesn't do it.
And we're going to do a good job of making sure the public knows it's a new ordinance.
Yes, yes.
We've got to do our due diligence.
The next thing would be, you know, some real reach out, some public education, and some, and I think we're prepared to do that, because you're right, we need to. Anybody else? Everybody good? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam clerk.
Resolution number 2559, a resolution accepting the financial report for the fiscal year ending October 31st, 2024, as presented by Calder Slaven and Company.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, any discussion on our financial report? Everybody good?
Everybody good. Team effort, good job.
It is a team effort, and all my staff and a whole lot of department heads and everybody that works here.
Makes our job a lot easier.
It does, it does. We've seen the reverse, and that wasn't fun.
No.
Then if no discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you. Five B.
Resolution number 2560, a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025, to authorize the continuation of a special tactic therein.
I need a motion, so move. Councilman Dan Dahl, second. Councilman David Merrill, any discussion? Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Thank you. Five C.
Resolution number 2561, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement between the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, and other government entities relating to the redesignation of the Louisiana Metropolitan Planning Organization as the Acadian Metropolitan Planning Organization and its governance.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Representative Ricky Gosselin, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, good evening. How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys? Thanks for having us today. My name is Sarah Gary, and I am the CEO and the Transportation Director of Kitty and Planning Commission, which houses our MPO. You guys are a member of the MPO, you've been a member for quite some time. Every 10 years after the census, our urbanized area changes, which then means that our planning boundary, which is our larger 25-year boundary around the urban area, also changes. And so because this year, we did add a new member, the city of Abbeville, we are having, due to us adding them, Federal Highway says, the agreement that we have with all of our member entities, we're having to get it resigned. And so that's what this is, for your continued participation within the MPO. You guys have a couple of projects with us that you have. One of them is the US 90 frontage road extension. The other one is the Iberia Street Pavement Preservation and Bike Improvements. And then you have two overlays. One is on LA 3156 from St. Peter to Fulton Street, and the other one is LA 86 Superior Avenue from LA 182, which is East Main Street, to LA 86, which is Lauraville Road.
Correct.
So.
And if you look at it dollars and cents, the Iberia Street's a million dollars, the frontage road is 1.4, and so if you calculate what we've paid the last nine years, it's 142,000. So we are far, you know.
I think if Ashley did the numbers for us, I think your rate of return was at 24% or 25% rate of return, based off of what you pay in and what you get out.
Definitely, no, it's so, just want everybody to know, it's well worth it, great partnership.
Any new projects on the horizon?
So we are hoping to hold a project call. Things are kind of in flux right now with the federal government, as you guys probably are all well aware of that. And so our plan was to hold one this summer, but we're kind of holding off until things settle down and we know exactly what's going to happen with the Department of Transportation as well as FHWA. And so once that kind of settles and we kind of know what's going to happen, we'll hold another project call. And at that point in time, the city can apply for any of their, any projects along their federally aid eligible highways. Sidewalk projects do not have to be along federally aid eligible highways, it can be along your local, or along your local roadways.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How do we stand with the frontage road? Where are we at on that now?
It's moving, it's.
It's finally moving, thank you.
Finally, that's a good word.
Yeah, it is currently under design with Stanley Consulting. They're the consultants that are, it's a retainer contract that LA DOTD used to get that road designed. Once the design gets to, I think it's about 65% final plans, that's when they start the right-of-way phase. And then the right-of-way phase will probably take a while, because obviously there's negotiations with property owners and that type of stuff. And then from, once right-of-way is done, if there's any utilities to be moved, then that phase would start. I'm not, I'll be 100% sure, I'm not sure if they've identified if utilities do need to be moved at this point in time, and then once right-of-way utilities are moved, then construction starts.
Mayor, I thought we had a right-of-way problem with a couple of those big signs, and we got through that and took care of some of that.
The signs in the railroad are done, but there's, yes, but there's going to be the entry of the road and where it meets up with our road, so there's going to be some real estate that has to be.
But those two issues.
Yes, those two are done, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, but it's moving, I'm.
It is moving.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks for your help on that.
You're very welcome. Thanks for also getting them moving too. Sometimes calls from the mayor or a politician does help get moving, things moving along.
Good. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for, Sarah.
Thank you, thanks for what y'all do.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no other comments, please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you very much. Six A.
Special ordinance number 2024-2025-15, an ordinance amending the budget to account for new sales tax levy and provide for increase in fire department salaries and benefits, and setting for public hearing on June 3rd, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman David Merrill and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, is there any discussion on this item? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Six B.
Introduction of ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance levying millages on the 2025 tax rule on all property subject to taxation by the city of New Iberia, and setting for public hearing on June 3rd, 2025.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, any discussion on this item?
So, Mayor, it looks like we stand neutral on all the millages.
Yes, all the millages will stay neutral, we're not expensive enough. Any other discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll come to the one that I was all messed up on. This is the new one. Madam clerk?
Introduction of ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance amending and reenacting section 70-4 of the city of New Iberia code of ordinances to prohibit the discharge or deposit of grass clippings and lawn debris onto public streets, sidewalks, and storm drains, providing for enforcement and penalties, and for other purposes, and setting for public hearing on June 3rd, 2025.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Representative Ricky Gosselin and.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill. Discussion? Yes, sir.
So about enforcement of it, is that going to be like the, can the owner take pictures of the yard person doing it, or someone else, or the police department has to see it happen?
I think we'll be able to use, utilize the cameras, but also as the police, you know, as any other ordinance, you know, as they witness it, they can enforce it. I think that you could be able to use other cameras, in other words, a home camera. Remember, at some point, when our technology's completely finished, we might even be tying in people's cameras to our system. So a video from an individual will hold up. I mean, that gives us proof.
They can call the police department, since we're making an ordinance with fine.
Yes, yeah. If you see someone doing that, and I mean, again, we have to get diligent and be serious about, you saw the flooding, I mean, I know we had eight or nine inches of rain in a very short order, but, you know, the whole thing with the flooding, with the $1,000 making a wake, with this $500 fine, we don't want the money, but it's a battle of inches. You know, many houses flooded by one inch, two inches. They're just as devastated as if they flooded by foot. So the goal of this is, again, I'm not trying to be a jerk, make a poster child out of a couple of people and get the message out and get people to stop doing this. So this is just really awareness, but again, this whole, I'm going to be coming to you for some, you've already approved a million dollars that we are spending doing drainage of, enhancing the drainage in all the areas that we've had flooding, and again, as I tell the engineers, it's a battle of inches. So that's the importance of this, but yes, we will be able to enforce this.
And also use their phone, video from their phone also.
Yes, sir, any video, I mean, can hold up. You've got to be willing to go testify, maybe, you have to be willing to present it, you know, it's not going to be anonymous.
Yeah, if you use your phone, you're going to be anonymous.
Well, you won't be. Yes, sir, Councilman David Merrill.
I hope it works good, man, because you remember you on the council with me. We tried this a long time ago.
That's what I said, we've done this quite a few times.
And it wasn't working that well.
With a $50 fine.
Well, we tried with a letter, okay, and the letter worked for about two weeks, and then the letter quit working, and.
Just got to be a little bit more about forcing it more.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So.
But we didn't have a police department there, you remember?
Right, you're right. We ain't going to go there.
Yes or no, but we didn't.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
I have a problem child in my neighborhood, and I never can see who is cutting the grass. Is it the owner, is it a lawn service? What do you do in that instance? And there's not a camera right there.
And there's not a camera there.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to have to.
I mean, maybe issue out a warning, is that even a thing that you would want to do?
Yeah, I mean, I still think that we can do that, and now that we have an artist with some teeth, I know one officer in particular I can send over there to knock on the door, because he, we utilize him for a lot of things like that. So that, having the ordinance, that's the possibilities that we didn't have before. So that's a good point, we can, you can turn it in and we can send an officer to say, okay, you know, at some point, we're going to catch you.
Right, okay.
Another thing, too.
Yeah, let me let everybody go once and then, just trying to beat the traffic. Was somebody else? Okay, I'm.
So I think now, I think, and I would, what the advantage this ordinance has is that now when we send a letter, we have some teeth on the letter.
Yeah.
They can say, now, we can find you, we will find you if you caught. So I think that might, in your case, probably would work, sending a letter to those individuals.
Okay.
Or an officer.
Or an officer.
If I don't have an ordinance, I can't really send an officer.
Of course, the officer can deliver the letter.
Okay, good point, thanks.
Right, right.
Hey, what I wanted to say on that is.
Yes, sir, Councilman David Merrill.
When I experienced that some years ago, some of the areas in my area, I went knock on the door and talked to them myself, I'm saying, if you can do that and they're good with it, it's okay, because it did help in a lot of, you know, when I did it myself without going to enforce it, and they listened, and, because, you know, I don't like that myself, man, when people cutting their grass and grass all in the street, man. A lot of people don't, it don't look good, especially if you cut your yard and you've got somebody to take care of that and it's all in the street, so. But if you know them and you can talk to them, it's a lot easier if they listen to you without going to the next level, you know, it's just something out there.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Everybody good?
I think, you know.
Sir.
I also think that, you know, as part of elected officials, I think we need to do our due diligence, and if you see a grass contractor, let them know that this is in play now, because I think it's important that we inform them, that, you know, we are watching, and just so they know, and they can't say, look, we didn't realize it, or whatever, and I think it's our part to let them know.
Right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Grass cutting businesses that are in the city, do they get a license from the city? Toppery?
No. No, sir, they don't.
I thought of that, we could have sent them something.
Yeah, with the license.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I actually stopped a contractor, a lawn service contractor, and thanked him for blowing the grass back into the yard, and told him that this was coming and to be aware that it's going to, it's going to be a good, healthy price to pay. I'm not sure how to, how to reach those, the rest of the folks, but I guess we might have to think out the box.
You talk to one, they ought to talk.
Maybe the repair shops, the lawnmower, the places, people who are in that business, we could notify them, like Mr. Merrill said, we could drop, drop some flyers or.
That's a good idea. And this is just introduction, we still got a little ways to go until the law, and even with the flood, when we do have to do our diligence and get the.
I'll just add one more point of concern, is that, like the boulevards, that we could, that our people could, I'm not sure how, what the plan is for that, but that's, that is a little difficult, when the boulevard's only five feet wide and the mower is four feet wide.
They're right on one side.
Yeah, exactly.
But I agree, I've.
We've got to get a little creative.
I wrote down Jefferson Terrace, and I was like, okay, we got a problem.
We've got to put that in Horden's, you know, because if they see our employees blowing in Jefferson Terrace.
But no, they're going to have to, our people are going to have to fix it.
Well, I mean, just think about it, yeah, yeah.
We're going to have to figure out a way that they pick it up from the.
Exactly.
I agree. Thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman Ron Davis.
Ben, it's a new ordinance, and of course, it needs to be done to help us out in our drainage. Are we going to do anything as far as for advertising this?
Yes, sir.
Put it on our, our Facebook page?
Yes, sir, we, we, we definitely are, definitely.
All right, good deal.
And we're gonna have to do that for both of them. Anybody else? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Sixty.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 202514, an ordinance amending and reenacting Section fourteen dash two of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances relating to the returning of seized animals to their owner and setting for public hearing on June third, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Brooke Markcott, Mayor Brooke Ricky Gosselin, and, uh, wanna come up and tell us about?
So, this one is to allow my animal control officers to return animals once we find the owners. In our ordinance, it inhibits us from doing that, and enforces us to bring the animals into the shelter, which, it's a shelter, there's lots of infectious diseases, things like that, that can come and infect this already owned dog while it's sitting there. This would allow them to canvas the area, turn right back around, and just give this dog right back to its owner. And hopefully in the future, if the dog is running at large, we can give them a citation or a warning to be like, hey, make sure you keep your dog on your property.
Okay. Good, good. Any questions?
It gives you, gives you more tools to work with?
It does, yes.
Yeah, frees up people quicker and everything else.
It frees up my staff, it frees up my cages, so we're not just holding it for forty-five dollars.
That, that's what we need, we need input from you guys, which y'all, which y'all need to make the program more effective, and I'm always...
And that's why I'm here tonight.
That's why I'm, thank you for coming.
Good, thank you for coming.
I appreciate you stepping up to do this.
It's a tough, it's a tough business.
Thank you.
It's a tough business, Jim.
We don't have a motion yet, huh?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion second.
Yes, uh, Brooke and, Brooke and Ricky.
All right.
Okay, uh, you got a comment?
Yes, I was thanking her for coming and doing this. Amanda's been very involved, for those of you that might not know, she's a manager of IPAC, and, um, she works very well with me so far. Um, we communicate, she knows that I'm an animal lover, so, um, she's good stuff, you know, I'm glad to have her, because, I mean, we've had a lot of people in that position that maybe didn't do as much work as what she's doing.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Yes, appreciate it.
So some, um, animals has tags, some have little implants in them, correct?
Mm-hmm, the microchips.
Micro, so they, they'll, the person will be able to check both?
Yes, and my officers do that now already. This just allows us to not have to bring it to the shelter.
Right, I got you.
Um, but they scan the micro, they scan every pet that comes in to see if they do have a microchip, we check for collars, tags, we really try our hardest to reunite pets with their owners. We don't want them.
Right.
I love all the animals, but we don't want them.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Everybody good? And, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. And the next item, you...
I know, I figured I'd just stand here.
You might as well stay up.
I got one, one quick question.
Oh, sure, sure.
Does the parish have a similar ordinance as the city on this particular item?
I am working on the parish. That is my next step, to get the ordinance to match on both sides.
'Cause I mean, 'cause animals don't know city and parish line.
They don't, they don't, they, they don't see that line. Um, I am working on that ordinance next, that's just a bigger step for me. Um, I wanted to get in front of y'all first, to get it in the city, since we are closer to the city, well, not closer to the city, but we're closer in getting this passed to the city there, that's the right word.
We're the trailblazer.
Hey, look, and it's painless, right?
It's painless.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, six E. Madam Clerk?
Um, introduction of ordinance number 202515, an ordinance amending and reenacting Sections fourteen dash thirty-one and fourteen dash thirty-seven of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances relating to a community cat program and setting for public hearing on June third, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Brooke Markcott, I need a second. Councilman Ron Davis, thank you. Um, yes, ma'am?
Okay, so I would like to start a TNR program, or a trap, neuter, vaccinate, release program in the city of Iberia, in the city of New Iberia, excuse me. Um, what this is gonna do, as I'm sure you guys have seen, they are overrun with cats right now.
Oh, yes.
They're everywhere, right? TNR is the only proven and effective way to decrease cat population over time. Otherwise, we would just be bringing in fifty, hundred cats a week and euthanizing them. That's not what we wanna do. Cats are not a danger to the public, they are run from you, dogs are a different ballgame. But with this TNR program, we can effectively decrease the cat population over time, effectively and humanely, by sterilizing them, trapping them in their area, they're already used to finding caregivers in the community on the streets that they live, returning them, they'll have a tipped ear, which means they'll be missing a little part of their ear, it's painless, they're under sedation when they get this, it, they, happens when they get neutered. So that way, when we trap these cats, we can say, oh, this cat's already been neutered, we can re-release him back to his caregiver.
Okay, yes, sir.
One thing we might not have mentioned, we do have a leash law for dogs.
And cats as well.
And for cats?
And for cats, that's one of the...
It says cats.
It does say cats.
When we had a leash law...
It's been like that forever. I never saw a cat in a leash, but it's been like that forever.
I'm glad I brought it up one time, and they shot me down quite a few years ago.
Well, you must've done something right, they put it in.
Well, that's good. No, but people need to realize, um, even wa, I know it's kinda off of this, but walking in the park and that, some people walk with their dogs and that, they really shouldn't need a leash, because with strange people walking, the dog could, you know, we had a few incidents in city park, and, um, but people wasn't aware of that. You know, this happened way back when, we don't really say much about it, but I think it's time to bring it back to the attention of people, uh, that they do have this leash law for dogs, and now, cats. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we can...
I didn't know that.
Maybe get rid of the leash law on cats, so that we can do this TNR program, because it does inhibit us from releasing these cats because of that leash law. The dog leash law, we do rely on the police to give those citations, um, this is off topic, but I'm hoping that in the future, my animal control officers, once I have more staffing, we will be able to start taking that over and giving those citations, or just giving those warnings to people.
Yeah.
Your dog may be trained, but the other person's dog may not be.
Right.
And then that can cause an altercation, there's just so many risks involved with dogs off-leash.
Yeah, I remember the, the discussion, not argument, discussion, that people get bit by dogs more often than get bit by cats.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a dan, we don't have a dangerous, we don't have a dangerous cat community.
That was the argument why we couldn't do it way back when.
I'm on that committee for the dogs.
Yeah, I know, it's really dangerous animal, but I don't think we've ever seen a cat.
Yeah, never.
And, and the reason they came up with the, uh, uh, 'cause I was here, I was just remembering that, 'cause the cats would get on your car, and scratch your car and all that, more than someone getting bit by a cat. So it was a little different reason than why they wanted it way back when, but that's good, I'm glad to hear that.
And I'm happy to say that we were awarded a grant to get this program started up through the Best Friends Animal Society, we were given a ten thousand dollar grant.
Oh, good.
Um, that grant does also allow us to get deterrents. So say you have that nuisance cat that is jumping on your car, leaving those cute little paw prints all over, um, we do have the capability of ordering deterrents to give to the public to help with that. So say this, so say we have a community of cats in Brooke's area, say Brooke doesn't want the cats on her property, I can give her a deterrent that will help keep them off her property, but it'll still allow us to do the TNR with a caregiver on a separate street.
Wow, that's good.
Interesting.
Sir?
Okay.
Councilman Ron Davis.
This is a little different, uh, not cat nor dog, okay? Uh, there are other types of animals that do prowl, you know, especially in areas where there are these dilapidated properties, you know, maybe raccoons or opossums or whatever. This deterrent that you're speaking of, does that work for those, or is there any ideas, or do y'all do anything with that?
So we don't actually do anything with wildlife, we only deal with dogs and cats, but the deterrents that we have can be used, and they're fairly cheap on Amazon, too, um, they're less than thirty dollars. You can use them for raccoons, opossums, I don't know about snakes or birds yet, but those two main nuisance, the raccoons and opossums, the deterrents can be used for them as well. Because when you do have care, community caregivers, what else is gonna come up for food and resources? Your vermin, your raccoons, your opossums, they're also gonna come up. We can give those deterrents to help keep them away as well.
Cool. That's a good question, I didn't think of that.
Um, this ordinance does fix the leash law issue for cats.
It does, yes, I was looking through it the past, I've been looking through it the past two weeks.
Yeah.
Making sure that everything was...
So, um, that's cleared up, so you guys are good to go with that, which is great.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, Acadianakers is a mess with cats, as you know, um, I get complaints all the time, but I mean, people were feeding them, thankfully nobody on my street, so I don't need the little deterrent that you're talking about.
Good. You said you may need it?
Yeah, 'cause I didn't know, I'm allergic to cats, I didn't know the doctor told me that.
I'm actually allergic to cats, too, so I can share that sentiment with you, and I work in the shelter.
Yeah. So, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Send me, uh, send me an email, and I'll help you get some deterrents if you absolutely need them.
Okay, I have a lot of cats. So, question, um...
Yes, sir.
You said you got a ten thousand dollar grant. Moving forward, after your ten thousand dollar funding runs out, what is your future intentions on funding? How are you gonna fund a program to continue, uh, being, making it successful?
That's a great question. Um, I'm hoping that I can budget this into my next fiscal year with the parish, once I prove that in the next six months, my pilot program does work for TNR. So my whole thing is a six-month program to prove that, yes, we are effectively reducing this cat population, we are reducing the amount of calls that we're getting, nuisance calls, the amount of calls that the council people may be getting as well.
Mm-hmm. But what does it cost to, for one cat, do you think?
So for a spay or neuter, you can anywhere up to eighty dollars.
That's what I was wondering.
Second question, so this is, no, no, you cut me off, but you can.
No, I didn't mean to.
No, so, I mean, I, I was, uh, in, in, Freddie can attest to this, I mean, several, couple of years back, I, I thought that we ought to talk about a spay and neuter program, but it has to be parish-wide, and we can't just do it in the city, you know?
It would have to be parish-wide.
Right, and so that's, you know, it would probably be a difficult road, but, so this is close, what you're doing with the cat tier is probably closest to a spay and neuter program for cats as we gonna get them.
It essentially is a spay-neuter program for cats, because we're trapping, we're neutering, which neutering is the universal term, and then we are releasing. So every cat we get is gonna be sterilized and vaccinated, let me clarify that, and vaccinated.
But is there a program for dogs the same way, or no?
No, so dogs are a public nuisance, and they are a public threat, which the stray population, the loose dogs, is definitely an issue. It's been an issue long before I came on, something that I'm working really hard to correct and amend. Um, it just comes down to needing more staff, and we, having my officers actually on the roads, being able to pick up these animals versus cleaning kennels for six hours.
Great information, really appreciate it.
Because I have a neighbor feeds every dog, every cat.
We all know someone, don't we?
Right across the street, I mean, I say, my God, why you feeding all these animals? And it is draw to her property.
And I'm sure she has other vermin and stuff coming, too, raccoons, opossums, I'm sure you've seen them at night.
Yeah, it's an opossum, I mean...
Yeah.
I mean, she just draw them to her property, I mean, it's like...
Now, she might be a good caregiver for us, for cats, the dogs are a different situation. Um, we would have to maybe educate her on how to, I don't wanna say she's doing it improperly, but how to properly care for the animals that she's feeding, maybe putting them on a more strict schedule, so we are decreasing the amount of animals she's getting onto her property.
Uh, oh, yes, sir. Dave.
On your, uh, catch and release, uh, program, do you check these animals for any other type of things, like diseases?
So we would do a physical look at them, we wouldn't be able to do an internal look if they have any kind of internal things, but if, if we catch this cat, and I'm like, oh, his eyes are sealed shut, he has an upper respiratory infection, that's not a cat I'm gonna re-release right away, that's a cat I'm gonna take in and hopefully treat, and then release him back in later. For things like ringworm, ringworm is very self-limiting, and it will treat itself after a few weeks.
Okay.
But that's also the part of vaccinating them, is to help decrease the amount of infectious diseases that they may have.
Any other questions or comments?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you talked to the vets for sure and know that they're gonna charge eighty, or is, it's different prices for different vets, is that how it works?
It's different prices for different vets, but for the shelter, it has one price.
Oh, okay, and it is eighty dollars?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. I'm just doing the math, and that's a hundred and twenty-five cats.
Mm-hmm. It's not a lot, but a hundred and twenty-five cats is definitely a start, especially for a smaller, yeah.
That's why I asked the price, 'cause I, I was realizing, you know, it wasn't gonna do a huge amount, but it's a good start.
It's a starting, it is.
You gotta start somewhere, and you gotta prove your program, you know?
Yes, exactly.
No, I understand.
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Definitely. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you, guys.
I'd ask y'all to please...
And you guys, I'm available via email, phone call, all you have to do is just shoot me one, and I'm happy to...
It's really a breath of fresh air, to see somebody has a passion for controlling our animal population, I mean...
Yep.
It's, it's really a breath of fresh air.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so I need to get your number.
Yes, I'll make sure to share it.
Please vote your machines. All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk? Six F.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 202516, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement bound between the City of New Iberia and Burglar Alarms and Security Company Incorporated, doing business as Lafayette Alarm Systems, for protection at the Seergate Community Center and setting for public hearing on June third, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Merrill, need a second. Councilman Ron Davis. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I, I see it's fifty dollars a month, is this a one-year contract?
Uh, I think it's a three-year contract.
It's a three-year contract?
And it's the sprinkler, fire alarm, right? Yeah, it's, it's for the, uh, it's for the fire alarm system for the, uh, Seergate, that's because we're putting a new sprinkler system in.
And what is, uh, the inspection of the two hundred and fifty dollars, is that a one-year inspection, I see?
I think that's every year, 'cause they have to come to certify the sprinkler system and the alarm system.
So that's for the sprinkler system and alarm system?
Both of them? Uh, I don't know, I think the sprinkler people have to do theirs, too. Both of them...
This says burglar and security.
Yeah.
It's a fire.
Right. Okay, thank you. I think it's tied into the fire, to the sprinkler system. Thank you. Anybody else? Um, please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven A.
Bobbitt, let's perhaps to present the monthly budget to actual report for November first, 2024, through April thirtieth, 2025.
Good evening.
Good evening. I hate to sound like a broken record, but everything's pretty much in line with where it should be in the budget. Um, all the department heads are doing a wonderful job monitoring the budget, making sure that they are staying within their budgets. Um, occupational licenses, we've increased the collections on the occupational licenses a little bit more. Once we get into, um, July, um, you'll see it where it's a lot higher, 'cause that's when the insurance companies' licenses are due.
Mm-hmm.
Sales taxes are right in line, as well as all the other revenues and expenditures. I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything on the report?
Questions coming? Looked over, everything good to me.
I say it's nice to have a, a good budget, I mean, uh, a good report on the budget, and, uh, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
And, and obviously, the insurance shows, just because we pre, made that big payment beginning, still shows a sixty-eight percent.
Right, if you notice, if you compare this report to last month, you'll notice insurance did not change. It's the same amount as it was in previous years cuz we pay it annually.
And that's a good thing.
So Bobette, you made a comment about seventy-six percent of the licenses compared to seventy-one. We mean of the licenses or the amount collected?
The amount collected, seventy-one percent, right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
For the record, could you um state what the nineteen sixty sales tax is dedicated to and?
The nineteen sixty sales tax is dedicated towards um salaries and benefits. It's um streets and constructions. Pretty much um any type of permanent public improvement.
There you go.
Not, that's right in the uh general general fund or is there a separate line item?
It's a separate line item. If you look on your report, you'll see it's the first line after general fund. It's the nineteen sixty sales tax.
It's how we brought the police department back. It's police, it's fire, it's sewer, it's any other public permanent improvement. So it's almost, it says bridges, we're not in bridges.
Yeah, streets and bridges.
Streets, you know, all of that. So that's uh that's our, that's what we live off of. That's the broadest tax that we have. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And you gotta remember that sales tax pays the difference of all of the funds that don't bring in enough. I know we have too many taxes, I get it. But fire, the taxes don't pay at all. Police, the tax doesn't pay at all. Public Works, the Public Works tax that we renewed doesn't pay at all. None of those taxes pay for any total department. All the money that makes up the difference of those comes out of that nineteen sixty tax. And the funds that don't generate money but provide quality of life and services such as Public Works, such as Parks and Rec, you know, that's where some of that money comes from because we have to keep those facilities up. All of that money comes from that. So that's our broadest tax and that's basically the tax that keeps us alive.
Yes.
Just cuz I can't find it right now, what is that percentage?
It's right now, it's at forty-three percent.
No, sorry, the actual tax itself.
Oh, the actual tax itself, um.
One cent?
I think it's one cent.
I think I saw somewhere we had two and a half, I don't know.
Yeah, but I think it's one cent.
Two and a half total.
One is one, one percent.
Yeah, cuz we we live on two and a half total.
Yeah, two and a half total.
Say, you know.
It's one percent.
Yeah, cuz cuz what we get after all the taxes divvied up between all the other entities out there, we live on two and a half. I think I think it's one.
I think it's one percent, and then we have several quarter percent sales taxes as well.
And I I just to to further the point that that I'm trying to develop in my mind is that this tax was approved in nineteen sixty. Obviously, things cost a lot more at this day and age than they did in nineteen sixty. And I don't think the public has a real good grip on on where, what we're trying to operate with or on the percentages of, or not in proportion.
And and it is a one cent sales tax.
It definitely worked for bringing the police department back cuz that money wasn't available a long time ago.
But if you look at the report earlier, our sales tax is up.
Yeah.
This means that people buying more, more people in the city, more business in the city. Like I kinda argue that point. People is like, New Iberia seem like it's not. I said, oh, no, it's good. People spending more money in New Iberia.
Well, what's, you're right. We're attracting, yeah, business, we're attracting our business from other towns. We are becoming like, all of Acadian is a hub for Lafayette. We are becoming, you know, Abbeville, Franklin.
Generec.
Generec, uh Lowerville, uh all the small communities around, Delcum, um you know, E Rath. All those communities around are coming here and shopping, and you can prove that by talking to Donnie Rousset Rousset's, by talking to Chick Fillet, by talking to all those businesses, by talking to the locals, but you know, some of the national chains really track it hard. Um the study that's coming because June the third, our June third council meeting, Joe Borstrom will be here. That's the guy that y'all let me hire to do the economic study. He's gonna prove in no uncertain terms just how far people are coming, just what we're leaking to Lafayette and other communities, but also what's coming here because that's what's what's making the difference. You know, when we got here eight and a half years ago, you know, that that wasn't the case. What we have done and the reason that this book is so good is because of that revenue and that revenue comes from those businesses we chase. So when we put up four hundred thousand dollars to get a loves or we put up incentives to get the unknown developer that's coming, when uh all those different things, when we get uh Brian McClain with the new residential subdivision and put money up, the proof in the pudding is the audit we just got tonight is that those things are working, but that's the, what you have to do to leverage what you have to increase participation in your economy. And it's, that's that's what's working for us, you know? So that one cent goes a lot further than nineteen sixty because we building a machinery.
It's the only, only way.
People need to understand.
Growing a dime.
If you go to Lafayette to buy a vehicle, you pay local tax. We get the tax.
Yes.
If I buy equipment in my business, all the time when it comes to New Iberia, I pay local tax. So don't think if you're gonna Lafayette cuz you might be mad at whoever that we don't get the tax dollars from the purchase of the vehicle, but we do, or pretty much any equipment. People don't realize that, but.
So you might as well go see David Merrill.
Well.
I had to be right about that. Oh, dogs' air conditioning.
You want a unanimous second on that?
I just having fun.
Thank you, Bobette.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Congratulations on uh working hard for the audit.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. It was a team effort.
It is a team effort, but you did your part.
And Bobette, he he the audit, he's as good as his dad, he seems like, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. His daddy, we thought he was it, but I think this guy got it.
I worked for his dad.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's good. He's good. The apple didn't fall far from the tree.
Yeah.
He's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
She's doing a good job. I work with her every day and uh it's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We all good? Councilman's remarks. I will start on Councilwoman Markhot's side tonight.
Okay, I just want to uh quickly mention that N I P D has a new Facebook if y'all hadn't seen it, um which is great. They can put out information real quick cuz everyone stays on social media these days. Um but then also there's the City of New Iberia app that has the push notifications. I've gotten several notifications from that app, just of little things going on in town and it's really nice to have. Um so if you have an iPhone, you can do it on Android too, I'm sure. Uh City of New Iberia, look up the app and uh then follow both the City of New Iberia and N I P D on Facebook cuz a lot of information is posted there. Uh that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, all I wanna do is give my number to the people in my district. My phone number is three three seven three five two two zero four five. I wish y'all give me the opportunity to handle the business in my district because y'all calling other folks about it, people in the district, and they're the wrong people to call. Give me a chance to do the work that they elect me for, and that's all I ask. And I, you know, I wanna respect everybody and I want to, I want the same respect. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Uh congratulations on the audit. I mean, it's a big deal. It's a big deal and uh other than that, I'm good. I like the direction we're going.
Yep, I I so a couple of things, uh we uh we talked about Memorial Day, but I'm sure most of you are aware that our National Guard troops got deployed to Africa last week. So let's uh keep them in your prayers. Got a lot of families uh engaged in that and uh, you know, we'll keep them in our prayers cuz they are defending America and uh we're proud of them. And also, wow, congratulations to Catholic High School State Championship Baseball Team. Uh I was able to go to games and uh amazing effort, amazing group of kids, amazing coaches. And, you know, congratulations also to the surrounding teams that did just as good as them, but uh a state championship was great for that school and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna um copy on what he said too. Congratulations to Catholic High Baseball Team. That was a great, great win. It was close, but they did it, you know, and uh wanna recognize all the talented kids in our area. We're we're starting to get a lot of recognition from New Iberia, especially through Catholic High, Westgate and our schools, so. And also uh my neighborhood watch meeting, uh it was gonna be on the nineteenth of June, but we transferring it to the twelfth, the Thursday before, right after our meeting. And uh reason being is because they have a function going on, you know, in Slamon, so we're gonna transfer it to earlier, the week before that. And I did counsel it from uh this month too because last week uh they had a lot of graduations and things going on. So I want to just make sure that everybody could spend the time with their kids and grandkids for that, so we're gonna continue next month and pick up where we left off. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh yes, uh it's the time of the year that uh schools ending. Uh the streets will get, be a little more busier, a lot more active. Uh kids gonna be out there. I encourage everyone to uh drive the streets uh safely. Uh also uh make preparations for your kids and be aware of where your kids are. You know, uh things are happening very, very fast today, frequent, and also uh even with the internet apps and stuff, just be mindful uh that school is out and kids will do what kids do. So uh keep that in mind.
Thank you. Yeah, let's remind everybody about Monday Memorial Day, they're having an event downtown around five o'clock. Um and I wanna appreciate the people who came out. I know the mayor went for the car show downtown. A lot of people went. It was nice, good crowd. And I had somebody today talked about the Pepplex, how they went there and how impressed they were. I told them we not finished yet. So I I mean, this council and this this administration did a lot to step this place up to a place where we all be proud of and uh and for the kids to play, so I thank y'all for that. Thank you.
I want to say something too.
Okay, go ahead.
Going back to what Dan said, they had the car show at Musson Patto Saturday also. They let, Musson let them do it every year and they had a couple of kids that would disable they did bicycles for and made for them, and a lot of people came and and I like what they do cuz that's something positive for those kids and their parents, and I can't afford that. Thank you.
Yep, the car show downtown had a hundred and fifty-seven cars. It's not a record, but it's a good year. Uh so that was a really good event. Um over the next few weeks, uh we have continued over the last few weeks of continuing to meet with flood victims. Uh one of our engineering firms, Chandler Staples, has hired four people. They will be out surveying areas. That starts in about a week. But over the next month or so, if if you have been a victim of flood, uh you will be visited. We're looking for elevations and they'll be doing some hydrology studies and looking for solutions. We have a million dollars set aside to make those uh required repairs or additions to our system where we can. We had over eight inches of rain, so our system was overloaded. Uh not saying we can fix everything, but we are making the effort. Um so just be on the lookout uh that people will be out and about in the neighborhoods where the flood victims are, uh just checking houses, checking things, asking questions. Um we will be continuing to meet with people and uh looking at those issues. Uh probably in the next, I'd say a month from now, I'll be bringing uh another concept for sewer. We have some repairs we need to make and some things that we need to do. If everybody remembers, we had uh qualified for the five million dollars, had to turn it in because we would have had to raise sewer user fees and they would have just about doubled, and we as a council decided that we couldn't do that. So we're looking at some other options uh as we speak. Had some meetings today and will continue to, but as soon as I can bring that forward, that there will be some other projects coming, um you know, to make those sewer improvements that that some of them are long overdue. But anyway, so those are the two things that I've been working on a lot the last two or three weeks is uh flooding sewer. You know, it's all about the infrastructure. Uh update on the roads, um and you're gonna see on Facebook, we're gonna start doing, uh we have, are ramping up our uh presence on Facebook. Um so we'll be doing some recaps of the council meetings and letting people who don't watch the meetings but look at Facebook kinda understand what we're doing. Um uh that's gonna be my vehicle to get out these new ordinances that we're in the process of passing or have passed. Um but I think you'll see a uptick in activity on Facebook and what we're gonna try to do that we haven't. Um there's been many times that the court of Facebook starts rendering opinions and they don't have any of the knowledge. They just make it up as they go. Uh not everyone, but some people do. So you're gonna start seeing the City of New Iberia responding, no back and forth, just putting the facts out. There are times that we have not even, for a very long time, have not even been saying, well, wait, that's not correct. Let me tell you, you know, what we're really doing. Or let me tell you how the steps we've already taken. Uh you're gonna see an uptick in that, and I think that that will go a long way to show people what this council and my administration has been doing, has been producing and will be producing. Um I think that it's important that citizens understand. We show them here that we're being fiscally responsible, but we have not done the best job of showing them what we're doing. Um if you plugged in, you know, the paper's two days a week, uh this is, this is on TV, uh they can find her on the internet. Uh we do the Kane Radio Show, but a lot of instances, that's that's not the way people communicate. So I think you'll see that we're gonna begin to outreach. If any of you have any ideas of ways that we can get our message out because I'm very proud of the work that y'all have helped me do cuz we are a team, and I think it's time that we uh show our citizens exactly what we're doing and, you know, I I have no room for nonbelievers. New Iberia is on a good path and we're gonna continue to stay on that path. And like I said, you know, if you're gonna quit, if you're quit, a quit. Uh you know, we have no place for nonbelievers. I see a group of very passionate people who work. Uh we all get beat up at times. We all get, you know, nothing that we do is right and no matter how much passion we have, you know, which it shows, I see it every day, but we're constantly getting kicked cuz that's part of our job. We just gotta take it, and the answer is to turn it back around and take that energy and do something positive, which as I see, we all do. So done with my speech and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.